All right. It's four o'clock, we're gonna start the meeting. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, founded on individual liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First item on the agenda is the Assessors' Meeting, and we have invited Assessors' Agent Amy Dunn to join us this afternoon to give an overview of the Property Tax Stabilization for Senior Citizens Plan.
Yes, it's a hot topic.
Amy, please identify and...
Amy Dunn, Assessors' Agent. I think my voice is picking up. All right. So, the new LD 290 or the stabilization for senior citizens means that if you are 65 years or older and you have lived in Maine as a Maine resident for 10 years, that would have qualified for the homestead, not necessarily getting the homestead exemption, but if you have, would have qualified all those years, then you can qualify for what they're calling a tax freeze. I'm gonna read this from a piece of paper because I find it confusing even reading the documentation. So, the law states that if you file an application and qualify, the tax billed to them is frozen at the amount billed to them in the prior year. In practice, however, that means if they file for the April 1, 2023 tax year, which is the deadline, by the way, for that year is December 1st to get the applications in, that means that the taxpayer, continue to file a timely application each year, their tax will be frozen at the April 1, 2022 amount going forward, as long as taxes continue to increase. Because 2023 will look back at 2022, 24 will look back at 2023, 25 will look back at 2024. Having said that, there are two exceptions, when there is a difference between the prior year and the first year. The first is if the taxes go down from one year to the next, then the person will be billed at the lower rate, the lower taxes. But in the subsequent year, instead of 23, looking back at 22, if 23 was lower than 24, we'll look back at 23, not back to the 2022 rate. I hope that makes sense.
Clear as butter.
Because it is very poorly written. Okay. And the flip side is if they fail to file, you have to file every year. If you fail to file, the tax reverts to the normal amount that you've been billed that year. And then going forward, if you file the following year, it would go back to that normal amount from the past year. Not back to 22 with the lower rate. See, clear as butter, right?
Yep. Isn't that, I've heard rumors of there'd be a challenge to it because it could be unconstitutional, because it's given us a break, but not one of you. You, you, and you, because you're under 65.
Right.
Like discrimination.
I have lots to say about it, but I'm not going to say it.
No, but I mean, I think, I've heard rumors that that is out there, but they gotta do it right away, because this is happening.
That and just the sheer, I have 40 applications already and the paperwork's been out for like two weeks.
It's a nightmare.
It's a nightmare.
And when we do our tax files, it's gonna be awful. The program and office.
Yes. All of that. Yep.
Well, wait a minute. Let's let the Select Board...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Address first, please. Any other questions?
No.
Tom?
The one thing you didn't mention is that the state will make up the difference that the town will lose.
Correct. Yes. By January of the following year, the state should have reimbursed us for that difference.
Yeah. They say 100%, but how long do you think that will last? And it won't be 100% if we're below that magic number, right? Like the other stuff?
Yeah, the 90s. Based on the bill amount, so I think that maybe might be okay.
So, that's one thing.
No, that's okay. I was gonna say it probably lasts two years at least.
How many?
Two.
Amy, you said you have 40 applications so far.
Yes.
Knowing what you know about the properties in the town, you have an estimate of how many applications you have.
Oh, we're well over 100, if not more. Low down, my mind. Low down.
My question was, you mentioned that there are cert qualifications for the program. Do you know what those qualifications are?
Yes, you must be over 65, and you must have been qualified for the homestead exemption, basically a Maine resident and owning your home for 10 years or more.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, Amy, in addition to this document, which is the application, attached to that in the office, there's a secondary sheet.
It's a little question and answer sheet, yeah.
So, 10 years more?
My suggestion, I'm directing this to you, can you raise the question? There, on the second page, there are definitions, and you should screen, I said, very, very carefully, they're not my whole words, but it really narrows down a number of people who will qualify. If you just look at the front page, it's like, oh, no big deal, but you look at the definitions and it'll help you make a decision on whether you in fact qualify or not.
All right. What I'm hoping, Amy, is that, is there, is there a website that people can refer to? Because what I wanted to do this afternoon by having you here and giving this overview was to allow people an opportunity to understand where they might find, what's the best way for them to find more information.
The Maine.gov on their property tax division has all the information, including the application, the little FAQ kind of thing, and the information sheet for the municipalities and what they need to do.
Would you, Catherine, please make sure that that's included in the minutes for the Settlers' Meeting?
Catherine also has all sorts of applications out on the counter in the office for anybody who might want.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
No.
Tom? Thanks.
I have one more. Who is reviewing the applications to determine that they meet all the stated criteria?
It's my responsibility to review the applications to make sure that they are over 65 and that they qualified for homestead exemption all those years, and I send them to the state and they take over.
Okay. Thank you.
Dick?
If your spouse is younger than 65, are you still on your...
If your name is on the D, yep.
If your both names are on the D.
Yep.
As long as one registered owner is 65.
That's my understanding, yep.
That's what I understood as well. Thank you, Amy. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is to approve the meeting minutes. We have a set of meeting minutes from the meeting, Select Board meeting, on the 1st of August. I have a couple of things to ask about or just to make comment on before we have a motion. On the meeting of August 1st, and this is probably so of other meetings, under Assessors' Meeting, we should probably make reference in that particular instance on the 1st of August, that we had nothing to report. Okay? On page 2, the top of the page, motion at 4:34 to accept the request from the office staff to increase petty cash bank. Please reference, increase the petty cash bank from $100 to $200. That was the vote, I do believe. Tom? And then, also on page 2, under the approval and signing of municipal warrants, there were no municipal warrants available to us to sign, so it should make reference to that. And at the very bottom, and possibly it's on a page 3 that I don't have, the motion to adjourn showing at 6:20, it shows that the motion was made and seconded, but there's no reference to a vote. Vote passed 3-0.
I'll sniff it.
May have fallen off. Do you have anything, Linda or Tom?
I don't have.
Chair wants to take a motion to accept the minutes from the meeting of the 1st of August as amended.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes from the 1st of August as amended. Any discussion? Linda, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tom?
Yeah.
Chair votes yes. Next item on the agenda is public comments. We'll open up a public comment session for anybody who would like to offer anything to the Select Board on any matter. Please come forward if you would please, and identify.
Hello, Karen?
Yes, please.
Hello, my name is Sarah Post, and I've lived here in Owlshead for about 22 years. And I am going to run for the Owlshead seat for the RSC 13 School Board. So, I just wanted, I've been in touch with the selectmen and let them know about my interests, and they'll let me know the process, and so I think I've decided that I would like to run. So, I just wanted to announce that here and hope that folks come on the 29th for the vote, right, in-person vote by the community.
You wanna offer any background at all, or you wanna wait until the meeting?
I can, sure. I currently work for a local engineering firm. I again have lived here for about 22 years, and I have a son, 15-year-old son, who's come up through the school district here, has done really, really well through the Owlshead Schools and RSC 13 Schools. So, feel like I have a good handle on what our families are interested in, based on that experience over the years, for sure. I've worked closely with some community education groups and helped get resources into the school district's process. So, I'm interested in that and also just working at the board level now. Already kind of done the hands-on piece with the teachers and the school district, and just wanna work at the board level for our community.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on any matter? Hi.
Thank you. Lauren Swartzfeld, 123 North Shore Guide. I just wanted to ask the Select Board, because I've heard as a, someone who's signed the petition to bring the moratorium to the town vote on the 29th, have heard like third, fourth person that one member or the Select Board collectively believes the petition to be illegal. And I just would like to hear direct from you if there's some concern or question about that.
I've not heard anything. There was some question from one of the MNA attorneys that the petition's not illegal, but the whole thing maybe has some questions about it, but, you know, they weren't specific about, you know, anything.
Yeah, I think that's essentially, that's a fair representation. We've been led to believe that there may be potential for a legal challenge if the thing passes. The Select Board, as you know, didn't want to put it on under their own power, they wanted to do the petition. But we did vote to accept the petition, and that was with, you know, I just had every right to do what you did, so.
I understand. I just wanted to hear direct from you whether or not, because people get things very much...
Sure.
So, it's why...
Again, I would note that we've heard some things that say that it's likely going to receive a legal challenge based on the merits, what people would consider the merits of the moratorium.
Okay, fair. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Maria?
I just wanted to state that I'm going to, you know, hope to continue to serve our town, representing them on the RSC Board. And I am gonna run for, to be elected, as opposed to the appointment. So, I look forward to seeing what the town would like to do between myself and my opposition, whom I just want to state has never been to a board meeting that I've been present for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Russ?
I can't mouse it much. I haven't ever met you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Russ Wolfert, live on Alicia Beach Road, and I think I'm down. I just wanna revisit something that I brought before the Board before, but this time it seems to be more official to me. I have a communication from the town of Owl, Vinylhaven, that likewise is my way of thinking I is concerned about the lack of supervision of rentals and the short-term rentals, which we call Airbnbs. They're having a problem there. This letter is also sent to Long Island, so it seems statewide this is becoming an issue.
Long Island?
Long Island, Maine.
Okay. Thank you.
To my brother. Kind of keeping the family. I have, I have the, their proposed ordinances that they're taking to their town, and what I would like to do is get those to you so that they're not necessarily on the next agenda, but they go to somebody for discussion after we get through our town meeting, so we have an airing on it. I noticed driving by that there are rentals, for example, on Lighthouse Road, that don't meet the code ordinance. So, then the next question that came to me as I was coming here is one of the constituents of Owlshead says, "Do we have an occupancy permit?" Yes, we do, but it's not enforced, never has been. So, we have buildings that are not being fully inspected, and yet now they're getting rented, and there's issues out there that obviously you see between safety and health that it should be. The one I'm talking about in particular is one where the deck is at least 36 inches off the ground, which violates both building ordinances and insurance. And somebody should be looking at that, and it's a code office thing. So, it ties to what we're doing with our code office to replace Scott, who's been good. I just think it's one of those things he hasn't had the time to get to, but it's something that we need to look at. So, I'm just suggesting or forewarning you that I will bring you a document to try to get to the agenda sometime after we get through the party next, at the end of the month. You know, it's got to be something where you can assign, I don't know who it would go to, whether it go to the planning board or to the appeals board, but somewhere where, you know, some sensible people can look at and design what makes sense for the town of Owlshead.
Okay. Thank you, Russ.
That's as soft a key as I can get.
You want some help out?
No. I'm learning how to do it.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment session. Next item on the agenda, under All the Business, discuss the questionnaire given from the auditors. Who can help me with that?
I haven't seen the question answered.
I call on the senior member of the...
Well, every year, they send us this stuff, and they send their audit letter and whatever.
Has it been traditionally the Select Board's responsibility?
Well, in conjunction with, you know, the office staff. It should be, sort of perhaps a copy from before. I think most of this is no, 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 but anyway. This is pretty standard questions that they ask every year, so we should have a copy somewhere, but most of them are yes or no questions.
Would you ask Pamela to come in, please? We should have a buzzer here, so.
Right. Like, "Do you have any knowledge of any actual suspected or alleged fraud affecting the town?" No. I mean, it's, most of them are yes or no questions. Well, this one, what legal issues has town been...
I thought I got my pages. Couple of pages.
Do you want to hold that one?
I don't know, that's all.
Hey, Neil.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming in. Pam, on the agenda, we've got a questionnaire given from the auditors.
I have not seen it, so I don't know what's on it.
Well, that's pretty standard from, we must have a copy of one from a prior year. Most of them are yes or no questions anyway, but a couple that needs a little bit of explanation, that...
Could you quickly look at that, and, I mean, while you're here, and is it something that you're familiar with, and do we have a pass record of previous questionnaires from years past?
Well, you know, I don't think we have copies of this stuff. Well, I mean, we don't have copies of what we've answered.
Well, they ask them every year, they're pretty standard questions that they ask, so maybe we do have stuff from somewhere where they...
Somewhere, yeah. Okay, so, what they wanna know, do you explain, do we have the fraud, the risk of frauds, which we don't?
Right. It's mostly yes or no answers anyway.
Right, so that's a no.
Yeah.
And we don't acknowledge anybody for fraud.
In years past, has the Select Board answered that, or have we taken...
Too late for you guys to do.
Right.
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, so...
So, we may need to review with you some of the information.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's safe, you can find it, you know, another prior copy of it, just to see if there was explanations, the ones that do need some explanation, like legal stuff, you know, outlining it. I know we do it every year, so, I mean, we should have hopefully kept a copy of our answers before we sent it to them.
All right. So, do we wanna go through this right now?
No.
We don't?
No.
When do you wanna go through it? When do you need it?
Well, she can't finish her report if we don't get all the answers.
All right. I'm gonna make a decision. We're gonna go through this question by question.
All right.
You might wanna look at the auditors file, if there is such a thing.
I have, I have all the end boards, who wants to?
Just to see if we found last year's.
Yeah, we should have had a copy of it.
All right. Question number one. Please explain your views about the risks of fraud as it relates to the town of Owlshead.
Go ahead, no risk.
None?
Bill, you had your hand up earlier.
Yes, I'm a CPA. I practice as an auditor on the side of the table for 14 years. I gave these questionnaires, I'd be happy to take a look at it and help you respond if you'd like my help, if otherwise, I'll leave it in your good hands. It's very open-ended. First one is very open-ended. It's no, yes, and it's not, yes, no.
Yeah, right. How do you, they're not asked us to explain...
Is it fair to say that our, our risk is limited? Risk of fraud is very limited in the town of Owlshead? Is that a fair assessment, considering the fact that some of these questions are about control?
Right. Yeah, but it's, you know, it's very limited. We, you know, we approve and sign all the warrants.
I mean, currently, I would say it's none, because we don't have any.
We review and sign all the warrants that go out to pay, to pay everything.
Number two. Do you have any knowledge of any actual suspected or alleged fraud affecting the town?
No.
Not to my knowledge. Tom?
No.
I thought you were gonna raise your hand and say...
No.
You have, and number three, do you have any knowledge of any possible or actual non-compliance or abuses of fraud programs and controls occurring during the period 7/1/21 through 6/30/2022 or subsequent?
No.
No. Number four, do you have an active role in oversight of management's processes for identifying and responding to fraud risks and of the controls established to mitigate those risks? And if so, how do you exercise those oversight activities?
Yes. We approve all the...
Financial...
Routine review of financial warrants. Financial and payroll warrants.
Yeah. Dispersed, yes, sir. I'm sure this is just something they add to that file, because legally, they have to ask us to sign.
Number five, to your knowledge, is the town of Owlshead in compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements? I would say yes.
Yes.
Number six, has the town of Owlshead entered into any significant unusual transactions?
Not good.
I know.
Find anything there? All right.
We'll have one for next year.
Number seven, does the town of Owlshead have any related party transactions or relationships?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Bill, how would you define that?
Do you require the employees here, as well as the members of the Select Board, to sign a conflict of interest statement annually, that you're not approving or engaging in transactions with businesses that are owned or controlled by your relatives or your children? If you don't, if you don't have that annual documentation, you have a possibility of transactions occurring that would meet that. It's something that's very easy to put in place. And you would ask the council members to similarly sign this, just to give you some current comfort that there's no, there's no self-dealing here.
Right. I don't, we don't have anything written, but I think in terms of maybe a...
Really, we only sign like, you know, our, when we're using the money. We take in every day, we have a paper we have to sign every year, when new people come in, we sign like computer policies and different things like that, but we don't have any of that that we sign over here.
Right, it would be like, perhaps...
Be that as it may, I would suggest you consider that going forward.
Yeah.
So that you have more of a comfort feeling that when someone's bringing a recommendation, it's not, according to the expression, enriching their next, their next door neighbor who is their son-in-law.
Right.
But I always like to have a conversation about some of the other questions that they're proposing.
Yeah.
The answers aren't as clear.
Yeah. It's like, if there's an article comes before the planning board or the appeals board, and there's someone that might have an interest somewhere, they always recuse themselves, you know, it's...
They don't always recuse themselves.
Well, that, well, but there isn't anything written, but that, you know, that's hopefully been the policy, but yeah, you're right, sometimes they don't. So, maybe we should address that at some point, not just in the planning board, to anybody.
Well, I advise clients, it's very difficult to defend yourself once it gets in the newspaper.
Yeah, that's for sure.
All right. So, number seven, again, does the town of Owlshead have any related party transactions or relationships?
I would say no. We just don't have a signed document on that matter, but we don't have any.
I suggest you say something like, "To the best of our knowledge, we believe we don't," versus not being as definitive as a no.
I'm gonna say none, to the best of our knowledge.
Yeah, you know, and what do they mean by that, you know? Is it, my cousin is on a boat somewhere and, you know, that's, is that what they're referring to?
Number eight, do you or other members of the town board of selectmen have any concerns about related party relationships, if there are any? I would say...
The same, none, for all of us.
None.
I would say something like, we would, would frown upon any related party transaction that would seek disclosure and recusement by people involved.
Right.
Without, you're not really answering the question, but you're saying all the right things.
Right, right, yeah. You know, we require disclosure of any relationships.
Number nine, how do you communicate to employees the importance of ethical behavior in appropriate business practices?
Is that in the handbook?
Yeah, it could be something in the handbook that...
You should get a sign-off every year from the employees acknowledging that they support that and they read it.
Right.
Yeah. It's easy, it's easy to do.
Right.
Yeah.
Are these the same questions that have come in here? Because I don't remember this document.
I think we change them around a little, but almost the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but it's something that, I don't know, they might not have done it a few years ago, it might have been something more new, but they're requiring us what to do.
Yeah, I know we've answered them, we've answered them before.
Yeah.
Number 10, what legal issues has the town been involved with? Let me tell the ways.
Right, yeah. I mean, how specific do they want? I mean, what's...
Actually, some of them have...
I'm sorry, can I make this, make a suggestion, is that they send a letter to your attorneys to find if there are any asserted or unasserted claims, reference them to that letter, unless your attorneys are still on for you.
Yeah, yeah, I don't... Yeah, yeah, I don't. And there's always just illegal things going on, but there's no particular suits. Yeah, there's no suits or anything going, no one is suing us, we're not suing anyone else.
They're looking for asserted and unasserted claims. So have, reference them to the, the letter that they send to your attorneys to look for these things.
I assume they do.
They could hit you out of response.
Right, right. As long as you answer the questions, it's fine. I don't know what you're saying. I can do the others, you fill the blanks.
Do you want the answers?
No.
Okay. Well, I'll bring this in tomorrow.
Okay. All right.
Next item on the agenda. Update from the Planning Board regarding FEMA and the National Flood Insurance Program. Is there any representative from the Planning Board who would provide us with an update on the FEMA status?
There was a letter.
But there's nobody in, on the Planning Board right now.
Well, I'm here, but you know, Ken holds that very close to the best. I can really tell you what he, he stated.
Well, I have a, I have a written document here.
Okay.
Looking for a chair. August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, update on FEMA status. Fifty-eight Crescent Street, waiting to hear if they're going to reopen the appeal to the zoning board of appeals. Ginpoint discussing with our attorney, having code enforcement officer reissuing notice of violation as next step FEMA expects us to take some action. Community advisory visit requests, send FEMA assessment cards for all residents on that list.
That's basically what, what her place is, my board meeting last week.
Yeah, thank you. Next item on the agenda, update from the Planning Board regarding the scheduling of the hearing for the moratorium upon further development at the Knox County Regional Airport. I have a written document here dated August fifteenth. Moratorium update, all proper notices have been sent to newspapers by the Planning Board and Catherine, which I'm assuming means you. Several members have volunteered to help set up and run the hearing. I don't know what that means, how several members will volunteer to help set up and run the hearing.
Well, the planning board has to run the hearing.
Yeah, I don't, I don't understand what that means.
Ken asked, Ken asked for assistance from the Planning Board members that were present last week. I volunteered to help him set up the room for the meeting.
Do you have any idea what he means when he says to run the meeting?
No, that I think is license on his part because I, he certainly didn't ask us to run the meeting.
Yeah.
He asked for assistance in setting up the room. Yeah, so.
Okay, any questions on that, Tom?
No, you might just want to mention the date for people.
I believe it's the twenty-fifth at six o'clock.
Yep.
Yes.
You.
Next item on the agenda, update on the plan to sell the grain haul. At the last meeting, I volunteered to draft the COVID language for an ad in the newspaper. And I was not able to get to that. I sent an email to both of my fellow Select Board members asking if either of them would be willing to, uh, help draft that. And I received no response from either one of them.
I don't think you have the expertise to do it. I don't have the expertise to do it.
You don't, you're the wordsmith.
You with a chair for five years.
I mean, you'd have to describe the lot and all that stuff, and I don't have that.
Well, it might take a little research, but with a phone call to the administrative assistant or somebody.
Well.
Besides the point, it hasn't been done.
Yeah, okay.
As I said in my email to the two of you, my schedule didn't allow me to get to it. And that was over a week ago. More disappointing is I received no response until just today. So I would like to think that when an individual on the Select Board puts out an inquiry, an inquiry or request for information or support, it would be some response. Got your message, go to hell, I'm sorry, I can't help you, something like that.
Well, I just assumed that, that Tom would do it because he's the newspaper guy. And I sort of reached out to him.
So, once again, I will do my best to draft something in time to get some kind of document put together for the review by the two of you. Unless either, neither one of you want to see it, then I'll just do it.
Yeah, you know, I don't think it's a, I don't think you need to describe it. Someone could come in and look at the property count, the tax math, and everything else.
Next item on the agenda, update on finding a code enforcement officer and local plumbing inspector. A gentleman who is the code enforcement officer and local plumbing inspector for the town of Hope reached out to us a little over a week ago. Uh, and I followed up with that person on the phone. In addition to that, I was scheduled to meet with two of the five Select Board members from the town of Cushing, where Scott also served as code enforcement officer. And at the last minute, they bagged that meeting, and so I have not met with the two of them. Uh, I did notify the two other Select Board members about this individual. He sounds like somebody who has been doing it for almost a year in Hope. If you, the two of you would like, I will again reach out to him and see if we can put together some kind of tentative plan and find out what his interest and availability is.
Right, and I just, you know, wondering, is it contingent on him doing both of them or, or we don't know that?
No, I do believe that he has contracted already with Cushing.
Oh, he has, oh, okay.
That's my understanding.
Oh, okay.
The day that I spoke to him, Cushing was gonna be meeting, and he was gonna appear before them.
Good, well, that's, we can invite him to appear if he's, if he's interested.
Yeah, I think he is. Again, I don't know if he's gonna have the hours available to. We haven't actually discussed at any length the number of hours we think we want to employ somebody. Scott has indicated that for the last couple of years, his contracted hours of service to the town is insufficient to, to the work that he's been trying to do. Our budget is already set. I don't have any idea what this guy's asking price would be, but, uh, we can certainly talk to him and find out where his head is at.
Do we know the hours that Cushing is requiring?
I do know.
I know, I know the code enforcement officer in South Thomason apparently doesn't have regular hours, it's by appointment only. So I, I don't know if, if that person would be interested either.
All right, next item on the agenda, under new business, vote to accept the August tenth, twenty twenty-two resignation of Kermit Von Cannon from the Board of Appeals. We have Mr. Von Cannon's resignation here. Is there any wishes of the, of the Select Board?
Do they have an alternate? Do you have an alternate on your board?
We do, Pam Holland's the alternate.
Isn't she been made, isn't she?
When she's, when she's there, we don't have enough, then she's, uh, she participates.
Okay.
So, so we don't have, uh, even, even a number of people.
Okay, so we could, if she wants to, move her.
Yes.
Into that and then look for an alternate.
And like Lynn said, she may have, that may have already happened, but I don't know that for sure.
Did somebody else fall off?
We accept your resignation, you know, I mean.
Did somebody else fall off, do you know?
Uh, it was, it was like a year or two years ago.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Couple of years ago.
Yeah, and so it, it was when I first started, so I wasn't that much aware of it, but. But.
Are we the ones who are responsible for appointing people?
Yes.
Yeah, she said twenty-three, yeah, so she was a year after, that's what I thought when she was.
She was.
Well, there's, there's Kermit, Sherri Stanley, Rodney Mason, yourself, and Pam Holland.
Right.
And then it doesn't say that she's the alternate, but that's, that's okay.
She was for the first year.
Yeah.
Right, right, so, you know, we can move her up and then look for an alternate. But there'll only be four.
On behalf of the Select Board, would you reach out to Rodney Mason, the Chair of the ZBHA?
Yes.
And ask him to give us an update with Mr. Von Cannon's resignation? Give us an update of his membership? And if any of those members are alternates? Just send them an email tomorrow.
Right, and, and perhaps, you know, he has someone that he would recommend, and then he can bring the name forward to us and we could approve it. So we get back to signing people again.
All right, so the Chair will entertain a motion to accept Kermit Von Cannon's resignation.
I'll make a motion to accept Kermit Von Cannon's resignation from the Board of Appeals effective August tenth.
With or without regret?
Well, I would always regret it. I think it's without correction.
Certainly. We have a motion in a second to accept with regret the resignation from Kermit Von Cannon from the Owl's Head Board of Appeals effective on the tenth of August. Any, any discussion? Anything to offer, Kermit?
No, I would just say that it's been my pleasure to serve Owl's Head in the capacity that I did on the Board of Appeals. And for personal reasons, which I've shared some with you, Gordon, just recently, I feel like it's, it's the right move for me, so.
How long were you on that board?
Just the last term, so I was at three years.
Yeah, your, your term is up in twenty-two anyway, so.
Exactly.
You know, you're getting down a couple of weeks before, before you need to.
All right, any further discussion?
Yes.
Linda, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Next item on the agenda, adjustments to the agenda. You guys have anything?
No, I just, just had a question on where we stand since we're losing our code enforcement office. Give us information on the building's, dangerous building's, perhaps contact numbers, so that, you know, going forward, we know what's going on with that before the, you know, to pass on to the new code enforcement, but that could be a month from now, so.
Yes.
You should have that information as to how to contact the, the two property owners.
When I was in here one day, whatever day it was, last week, I spoke to Scott, who expressed sincere willingness to assist his replacement.
Good.
Um, to the degree that he can. I asked him how I could get in touch with him other than his pager, and he said, I'll be in Rockport Town Office every day. So he's, he's at the other end of the phone for us to work through. There is one item here. That is, it follows up from the last meeting. It had to do with, uh, the Midcoast Council of Governments. The young lady came in and addressed the town about grant opportunities to assist the Conservation Commission. And I have a letter here that I'll ask for unanimous consent to put on the agenda so that we can act on it. From the town of Owl's Head, August fifteenth, to Brian Ambrett, Senior Climate Resilience Coordinator, Governor's Office of Policy Innovation and the Future, one eighty-one State House Station Augusta. Dear Mr. Ambrett, the Owl's Head Select Board strongly supports the Midcoast Council of Governments Community Resilience Partnership Service Provider Grant Application. We believe the Community Resilience Partnership could bring needed funding to Owl's Head for projects that help our community increase energy efficiency, lower energy costs, and become more resilient to the effects of extreme weather. As a regional planning organization, Midcoast Council of Governments will provide valuable expertise in community engagement resilience and energy efficiency to support our volunteer group in enrolling in the program and submitting a community action grant. Thank you for your consideration, and please do not hesitate to contact us with any questions signed by the three Select Board members if we so approve tonight, so.
I'll make a motion that we add it to the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to add an item to the agenda related to the letter to the Senior Climate Resilience Coordinator at the Governor's Office. Any discussion? Linda, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tom?
All right, we need a motion. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, you're right, yes.
Chair votes yes. So we now have approval through unanimous consent to add this item to the agenda. We've heard the reading of the letter. What is the wish of the Select Board?
I make a motion that we sign the letter as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve and sign the letter as presented. Any discussion? Linda, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Catherine, can you think of anything else that we don't have in front of us? Senator?
Name is, no, the dom?
Uh, could we have the warrants, please?
What is the status of, now I'm coming back?
I'm not sure, maybe for twelve weeks.
Well, yeah, I know, well.
Hopefully it won't be that one.
Do you mail that this year?
The, the thing is, the, the actual.
Excuse me, make a copy of it before it.
The, the actual copy of the warrant has to be posted by next Monday. So we need that, we gotta, we have to add that school board thing in there because it's not in here, it's not in this one. So that warrant has to be modified somewhat and has to be posted by next Monday because that's seven days before the, before the town meeting.
So to squeeze it in, we were thinking we might write one item, but four A and four B, four B being the election of a school board member. Otherwise, we'll have to change all the numbers, and it's probably.
Right.
Too much.
So do you have any idea at all what they're talking about?
Yes, it was, it was, no, it was like, we need to, the, the school board member was incorrect. Her term is up because we could only appoint them until the next town meeting. So we appointed Maria until the next town meeting. So we have to elect another one to fill the term that Sue Thomas, you know, resigned from. So we need to add, you know, a, a school board member, and it should be up in here somewhere. So it's trying to say we were thinking, you know, maybe the article.
Let's call it what we want to call it right now, how about six A?
All right. All right, six A. To choose a school board member.
Just for one year.
Sorry, one-year term.
Do you have an old book to follow that language?
That should be, uh.
One, I can.
Yeah, yeah, we can, yeah, exactly how it was.
And what we were saying is, is the warrant part at the back there, that needs to be printed up, um, is it five copies or something? And one posted at the post office, one here.
Well, she should have those anyway because we have to sign them all.
Right.
We have, we have to sign them, so they should be, they need, they're here somewhere, they need to be here somewhere. But you can't just copy this because it's not right, for one thing.
Yeah, this should be, this should be a full eight and a half by eleven.
Right.
Hard copied document, all of this information on it.
I can get on her computer and get it all.
Yeah.
Right, but add the school board one, sure.
Or perhaps just send her, you know, an email, she's accepting emails to see where it is.
She'll take your call.
Yeah, and, and the other thing, somewhere she did a, the Spirit of America Award. You know, she did that for me, so I need to copy that too.
I think I have that.
Okay, I just, I need to get a frame for it, not that.
You know, I were discussing her sort of, I never heard out of the operation of.
I don't know.
I spoke to her three days after the surgery, and she was, um, not very comfortable.
Well, yeah.
And I, I wouldn't discuss it any further simply because it's private.
Right, right, right.
We're not private right now.
Right.
We're still in open meeting.
Right.
But I have been in touch with her.
One of the.
Yeah.
Can I ask Catherine a question?
Of course.
Do you know where the oath is for? Is that, I don't know. Do you want me to? If she don't, if I know she get a. I checked. There should be an envelope here in my black little organized little.
Why don't you go help her find that while we get ready to sign the warrants and then come back and we can finish that. So next item on the agenda, although we were talking about other business, we're going to jump to the approval and signing of municipal warrants. Legal fees from Jensen Baird. Eleven hundred. Wait a minute, total balance due. Thirteen hundred and eighty-three dollars.
This was all effort related?
This has to do with the FEMA matters.
All FEMA.
Does anybody know what sales tax refund of over $1,000 would be?
It's. Oh, go ahead.
What was these or what was what?
Well, what is it for?
It was a. She must type the amount of the boat. And it charged them double.
Oh, yeah, if you, if you register, if you buy a boat from a private owner, you don't buy it from a dealer where they collect sales tax. When you register, we have to collect the sales tax, so.
A boat value.
I'm not sure how they figure whether it's book value or whether it's the purchase price. Should be purchase price. I'm not sure.
After I asked the question, I found a letter in here from Eleanor.
Yeah.
To the school.
Are there old warrants that I need to sign?
I see cut them out.
Just like the lottery views and then the regular warrants.
Okay.
Must have been an expensive boat.
Yeah.
The sales tax was $1,000. Only, I see it was $24,000.
I see $21,000.
Right.
You know what they say boat stands for?
Right.
E O A T, bring on another thousand.
It's a boat in the middle of the ocean. You pour money in it.
It's someone who has owned two boats, so we'll figure.
It's in that front house.
Those good works of Celtic. Good work.
Yep, I hope they do it, you know, I hope they do it again. I guess the ice cream social thing was great, but it's good to do that. Think when all this is over, we're going to think about having a Owl's Head Day, you know, and do some of those things. Combine it, whatever. Yeah, sort of the anniversary, not, not what's your last.
So after Tom finishes those, we should go back to that Article 6A. Just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
I'll make a motion that we sign the warrants as approved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to sign and approve or approve and sign all of the warrants as presented in municipal warrants. Any discussion? Linda, how do you vote?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Chair vote yes. So, please remember Catherine, to add that item that we discussed through unanimous consent to add that item. So there's two votes. One is unanimous consent, which passed with a motion and second to add it to the agenda and then the actual vote on the item. Let's go back to Article 6A in the town warrant that we were discussing before Pam came in to get Catherine's assistance. We need to make sure. And we need to also ask the question, is there anything else that we need to check on? For the town warrant that's going to be published and posted, it has to have more information in it than it does than what is in the book. The book is not complete because for some reason, unless it shows up somewhere else.
No, that's a joke. We don't know.
We need to elect the school board representative for RSU 13.
Can't you find it in any of the old books?
I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm looking. It's not, these old ones have chronological file. Slight, slight assessor, road commissioner, town council, what?
I think it usually was after the Select Board, must have been.
Yeah, I thought so, yeah. Because the rest of this, after that, it's all money. Assessor, overseer, road commissioner, town council, harbor master. It's got to be in one of these.
Well, we'd only elect every three years.
I know, I know. I know. I looked at, this is the fourth one I've looked at. Okay, I don't wait. To choose the RSU number 13 school board member, it's every three-year term until the annual meeting to be held in 2020. So in 2020, we should have done another one. But anyway, it's in, it's in here, and it's at the bottom of those. But you can put it anywhere.
What year was that one, 2017?
This is, yeah, that one, yeah, it's sitting there.
So this would come after Harvard Master?
I think it was the last one. I don't think the next is critical, but I think it was the last.
So make it.
7A.
7A or 7B, whatever.
Yeah, well, Article 7.
As opposed to 6, because if it comes last in the other one, probably should be consistent. So, 7A?
7A, well, verified from the book here. Let's look at the book.
I would almost suggest making 7A be the harbor master and 7B be the school board person.
Yeah, we could do that.
Good point.
Yeah, what happened to?
All right, well, let's, let's agree on that if we could.
Okay.
Article 7A, to choose a harbor master for the ensuing year.
Right.
Article 7B, to choose a school board member.
RSU, just worded the way it's worded in that one.
But it's all.
I would tell 2023. Just the way it's worded in that one except it's 2020 is 2023.
And what else is not in here?
I don't know.
Other than the audit. The audit doesn't go on the warrant.
Doesn't have to. It doesn't have to. We've got it available for people. But it doesn't have to be in there, so, you know, we can print out a bunch, but the thing is funny, pages long. The audit is huge, so I don't think we need to print 100 copies of it. It's, we can have a bunch of, you know, a number of copies, and if someone wants one, we can print it out for them at the time. I can't see printing out 100 copies at one.
No, they'll just come to the town office and.
Right, we'll let someone available pick it up.
And look at it or request a copy.
Right, most, most people don't, they don't look at it, I'm sure, but, you know, other, not a lot of people.
And at that point, it makes sense to offer, well, we can email the document to you and that way you don't have to print it out and charge them for the printing or whatever.
Right, right, well, shouldn't charge them for the printing, but we don't need a bunch of copies because if someone wants one, they can ask for it. Should be some available.
Well, if they ask for it, they better be available, right?
Right, I mean, they can, you know, we don't have to hand it to them right that minute, you know, it is available. What I can do is ask for it, come in and pick it up.
So, this one's three years. He is one of the 2023 figures.
Yes, yes, because she's taken, you know, the person is filling out the term that Sue Thomas was originally.
There's only one, there's only one position for Owl's Head now or ever. Maria is filling the incomplete term, which ends next year. But we could only appoint her through the next.
Till the next town meeting, annual town meeting.
And then she's running for the floor for one year.
Right.
Finish that one-year term.
Even though the town report is wrong, you know, it says 2023 minute. I thought we had that conversation. But anyway, it says 2023, I'll say 23.
All right. So not to be overly redundant, do you, do you understand what needs to be done?
Yes.
Because if you don't, you need to tell us so that we can try and help why.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the warrant, you know, we got a week to get it posted.
We have to sign.
We have to sign it. We have to sign all the copies.
So when will it be ready for us to sign?
Well, it depends. You just got to make that change and first you got to sign it and make the change and, and, you know, before you print out.
Call us when it's ready.
Yeah, well, before you print out 10 copies, we should look at it first, you know, in case there is something else that needs to be, you know, changed or included or whatever. So once you find it, change, you know, that one we just talked about, print out a copy so we can look at it. And then if it's fine, we can print the seven copies.
The other thing though, that one year where all the numbers are wrong, we just had a, an insert or a paper thing that was handed out at the meeting.
Well, we could do, you know, yeah, we could, you know, in these here, the ones that are available, we could put in that, you know, change, but the one we post is the official one anyway.
I'm terrified I'm going to ask questions, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm sure, you know, it's, it's there somewhere because, you know, she was working on it and had it done because it went in here, you know, other than the, the school board thing.
And just with all you have to do, because you have a lot to do in Eleanor's absence, this, this is a priority. This is a must-have. We've got to have this taken care of
Right.
in a timely fashion, so short of people walking in and they're right there in your face, nothing, nothing is more important than making sure that warrant is ready. Because we've got. Today's the 15th.
It's two weeks.
We've got three, three weeks before the next Select Board meeting.
Right.
So where you're normally jamming and scrambling at the last minute prior to another Select Board meeting, you're finishing up minutes. So you're going to have a whole extra week, but you should wait.
Right.
Ideally, we would get those minutes before the day of the meeting.
Right.
To give us a chance to review them electronically. But again, I think, I can't, unless you guys have some other way of saying it, there's, I don't think there's anything more important than making sure that that paper is taken care of.
Right, yeah, because if it, you know, if it's done, it's, the whole meeting is you know, you'd have to start all over again or do it all over again or something. Well, you know, if someone challenged it. But then, and the other thing is, we got to make sure we post that the Select Board meeting after the town meeting to set the, you know, the.
Do we usually make that announcement?
Well, we should. We, we can, I suppose we can announce it then, but, you know, it's a Select Board meeting. We have to meet after the.
To the assessors meeting.
Assessors meeting.
Yeah, we can, one, it has to be, yeah.
Do you know about that? After the, after the annual town meeting and all the votes are taken and that annual town meeting is adjourned, the Select Board as assessors will sit with the assessors agent to set the mill rate for the coming year. And Amy will have documentation for us to review, making recommendations between she and Pam working on.
And is that at the point, or should we have already given her input as to whether or not we want to take some from the reserves to offset the tax increases?
Well, yeah, we, we usually wait to see what it is before we make a decision instead if we're going to, you know, take some from surplus.
Well, for the last two years, she's come to us with
Right.
options for us to consider on her best, best advice.
Which were, but they, none of them were taken from reserve. It was just all.
Right, it was overlay.
Yeah.
It was the overlay, and if the overlay is this much, this is the mill rate. The overlay is this much, this is the mill rate. So she had like three choices of a mill rate depending on the overlay. But we.
So maybe, I don't know. Gordon, you should have a conversation with her and say maybe one of her choices should be taking money from reserve.
Yeah, it would be, you know, I have no idea where it, where it stands right now, so.
Just so we don't hit her cold, you know, with, with that idea. I mean, she can research, you know, what it is. I mean, she can research, you know, what it is and.
Yeah, well, we don't have the actual auditing, of course, we don't really know the final number for what's undesigned it, but we could not have taken all anyway, so this is real bad about.
But we would have at least the previous year, and we know it hasn't gone down.
Right, right.
And I think it was, what, 1.1 billion or something?
I don't remember, it was what, the audited report, but, yeah, perhaps she could offer us a scenario, okay, taking a hundred thousand, or what, you know, an increment or something. I don't know, I thought it was going to, you know, mill rate's going to have to go up.
I think we were talking about 10% increase, unfortunately.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know. Didn't find this.
All right, we voted on the warrants already. Have to take a motion to adjourn.
We did, we did use fund balance 153,782 last year to reduce taxes. So she must already, she must do that then, because that's, you know, that's what we've got in here. Year ended June 30th, 2021. Well, that would have been the year before.
Who would like to make a motion to adjourn?
Some.
Sir?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor, vote with your feet.
Yes.
I just gave my all, so.
Oh.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. And we are going off.